Evening. I call to order the regular city council meeting. Today's Thursday, February 13th, 2025. This is our regularly 7:00 PM council meeting in council chambers. All council meetings are live streamed. Tonight, we will have an executive session, RE potential purchase of real property, priority adjournment of our 21325 council meeting. After our adjournment this evening, we will also have a Richland Trust Fund meeting appropriating $5,000 to the fund. With that, I will call the meeting to order, and we will kick off our opening prayer with Pastor Jim Case with Talmage Lutheran Church, and please stay, remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
If you will, please. Eternal God, our Father, as we come together today, we come to give you thanks for this, this great city of Talmage. As I thank you for all of the paramedics who saved me a month ago, I thank you for saving our city, for bringing them together as one, as a council administration, as a mayor, a service department, a dispatcher, as a fire police, and all people who work together as one for the betterment of this community that you have built. Bless this meeting, bless all acts and actions that are taken, so to serve others, we can serve you. In your name we pray. Amen.
Thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right. Next up, item three, our roll call. Clerk, please call the roll.
Jonathan Bolus.
Here.
Christine Sippa.
Here.
Jessica Epstein.
Here.
Mary Gutman.
Ms. Gutman is excused this evening.
Donald Pavlik.
Here.
Ted Roy.
Here.
Nick Rubino.
Here.
Thank you. We have six council members present this evening. Moving along to item four, correcting and adopting the previous meeting minutes. These are the January 23rd, 2025 council meeting minutes we are in receipt of.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the meeting minutes from January 23rd, 2025 council meeting. Any discussion on the minutes? Clerk, please call the roll.
Christine Sippa.
Aye.
Jessica Epstein.
Yes.
Donald Pavlik.
Yes.
Ted Roy.
Yes.
Nick Rubino.
Yes.
Jonathan Bolus.
Yes. Meeting minutes are adopted by vote of six to zero. Moving along to item five, financial reports. There were no transfers in the month of January. We are in receipt of the appropriation report, fund report, and revenue report for the period ending January 31st, 2025, to council on February 7th, 2025. The January financial reports to council on February 7th, 2025. The Talmage Recreation Center Profit and Loss Report for the period ending January 31st, 2025, to council on February 7th, 2025. The income tax comparisons for the period ending January 31st, 2025, to council on February 7th, 2025. The income tax by source report for the month of January to council on February 7th, 2025. Revenue comparisons for major funds report for the period ending January 31st, 2025, to council on February 7th, 2025. And the consolidated investment portfolio for the period ending January 31st, 2025, to council on February 7th, 2025.
I'll make a motion to approve the reports as presented.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the reports as presented. Any discussion by council or administration regarding the financial reports? Thank you. Please call the roll.
Jessica Epstein.
Yes.
Donald Pavlik.
Yes.
Ted Roy.
Yes.
Nick Rubino.
Yes.
Jonathan Bolus.
Yes.
Christine Sippa.
Yes.
Thank you. Financial reports are approved by vote of six to zero. Moving along to item six, we have public hearings. There are none this evening. Moving along to item seven, we have community input. This is the point in the meeting, if you have any, if anyone in the audience would like to speak on an item that's not on the agenda this evening, you may do so now. If you'd like to speak on an item on the agenda, you would wait, please wait until they open in committee. Please come to the microphone, state your name and address, and you'll have two minutes.
Good evening. Julia Lewis, 63 Nottingham Street. I've appeared in front of you for the last three meetings, really urging you to pass the West Avenue overlay district issue, and I've come tonight to thank you very much for doing that. I don't know if you get thanked very often, but I'm thanking you. One unresolved issue, still the traffic on Nottingham Street will need to be addressed because whatever goes in that field will bring more traffic, and it's already bad. So I know there was a suggestion of a possible three-way stop at the curve where West Overdale Extension meets Nottingham. I don't know if that's something that would help, but anyway, that's, that could be discussed. The last time I came, I brought these two posters. At the time, they had just been kind of crumpled up, and I have gotten them framed, and I want to donate these to the city. They are historical documents for the allotments in Goodyear Gardens, and we were discussing with some individuals earlier of the historical aspect of those. So I want to donate these two. I had them framed, and I'd like to present them to the mayor this evening as a gift to the city, so.
Thank you very much. Mayor, would you like to say a few words?
Yes, Julia, I want to thank you very, very much for all your hard work and for these donations. We would, we are going to need legislation from council in order to officially accept these, but we will accept them ceremonially for right now. Okay? So thanks. Why don't you go ahead and hold one of these up, and we can get a picture real quick. Okay? All right.
I'll say, Carol, hold the other one up.
My gosh. I like holding the bigger one up. Thank you again very much. And you'll get legislation to go and officially accept them. Okay. Thank you. Thank you again, Julia.
Thank you again, Ms. Lewis. All right. Next up, item eight, our agenda additions. We'll go ahead and kick things off with the swearing in of our new firefighter, Mr. Jack Bennett.
I'm really excited to swear in Mr. Jack Bennett as our next full-time firefighter. He just joined our department in November, I believe it was, has been doing a phenomenal job, highly recommended to take over this full-time position. So I want to thank you very much for all that you've done. And so let's get you sworn in. All right? Raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Jack Bennett.
I, Jack Bennett.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
To uphold the Constitution of the United States.
To uphold the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution and statutes of the state of Ohio.
The Constitution and statutes of the state of Ohio.
And the ordinances and resolutions of the city of Talmage.
And the ordinances and resolutions of the city of Talmage.
I will faithfully.
I will faithfully.
Honestly.
Honestly.
And partially.
And partially.
Discharge the duties and responsibilities.
Discharge the duties and responsibilities.
Of full-time firefighter paramedic.
Of full-time firefighter paramedic.
For the city of Talmage.
For the city of Talmage.
Beginning Sunday, February 16th, 2025.
Beginning Sunday, February 16th, 2025.
Congratulations.
Thank you so much.
All right. Let's make this official, get it all signed. There you go. All right. Let me sign it, make it all official. We'll get a picture, and then we'll get a copy of this, and I'll make sure we get this original back to you, okay?
Awesome.
All right. Let's stand over here. You go ahead and hold that up. Okay. Thanks. And then.
If I may, thank you.
Yes, please.
Jack, congratulations. On behalf of myself and Chief Underwood, he pauses for not being able to be here. And again, first, we'd just like to thank council and the administration for the continued support of the fire department. This is actually a process that began about six years ago, changing kind of the structure of our department. Jack is actually our 25th active full-time member currently, which is the most we've ever had, and we have two more coming this year that meets the demands of the city and on the department. So continued support, and we thank for that. And so Chief Underwood couldn't be here, but he does pass along his gratitude, and then just special thanks to the administration council for tonight. For those that don't know, we actually just talked about doing this on Tuesday to get him in and get him started on the line. What you might not know is when she says he just started in November, Jack started on a Monday. He received his cards that Saturday before me. So Jackson worked very hard. He'll work on, he'll be on training for about a month and a half, but we were lucky enough today, actually works out because this is also the shift he's going to. So his family that's going to be here every third day are actually here to support him today. So again, very much just want to say thank you to council and administration for the continued support of the fire department in bringing in what we've asked them to need in both, both personnel and capital. So thank you both very much on behalf of myself and chief, and congratulations.
Thanks, Captain.
Please get a picture, Miss Brugge. Is it upside down?
Thanks a lot. Lock the picture. All right.
Congratulations to firefighter Jack Bennett.
Unless you want to.
Next up is the, we do have one other agenda addition. There was an addition of ordinance 2025-32 that will go to the Planning and Zoning Committee this evening at first reading. Next up will be our item nine, it's the reports of administrative officers. So I will turn the mic over to Mayor Kilw.
Thank you very much. Bear with me one little second here, sorry. Okay. As you can see, we just swore in our 25th firefighter, Jack Bennett. I'm really excited. He, he really does a great job. Unfortunately, he was on the call where they needed to take my dad in, and he was wonderful, absolutely wonderful. So I know we have a great hire in that one. We also gave another civil service test for full-time firefighter paramedics on January 29th. This list was blended with the individuals from the previous list because we're, we'll be hiring two additional firefighters, so the current list, because we're hiring two, is the top 15. And then as those people peel off, if they hire, they can then add the next person up. So we're, again, in that process of making sure that we have that extra shift for our fire department, to make sure that we have the manpower to serve our city. In reference to the Talmage Police Department, this is just another example of the flock cameras being used effectively. Just this past Wednesday morning, there was a report of a missing 90-year-old from our city. The 90-year-old's son received a message from him around 1:30 in the morning that he was south of Akron, broke down, and had a flat tire. This missing person being out at that, you know, 1:30 in the morning was very unlikely, and it was not that person's normal behavior. The relative went to the missing person's home, couldn't find him. Talmage Police Department took a report and began investigating. The missing person's son also contacted Akron's Police Department because that's where he was last known to be, and so Akron PD was able to ping his cell phone around 8:30 in the morning with his last location being on I-77 south of Brexville. So he's really, you know, out of his element. And then approximately 9:38 in the morning, so he'd been out since 1:30 in the morning, 9:38 in the morning, our flock cameras located him at the circle. The flock camera at the circle captured his vehicle and license plate, and within two minutes, our officers were able to find this missing person and pull him over. The ironic part of it is, apparently, he, because he had had this flat tire, and it happened in the middle of the night, he wasn't really missing. He knew where he was at, but he was dealing with this flat tire and take, getting a tow truck and going to a place and getting his tire fixed and finally getting home, and he was just out all night long. But it's just another example of how these flock cameras can help us not only catch the bad guys, but catch the good guys too, and make sure that they're safe. So just wanted to share that with you guys. I did have the opportunity as well to have some engagement with our schools. I spoke again to Mr. Osborne's Civic Engagement Class. I really enjoy talking to these kids because, you know, civic engagement is very important for everybody, but most importantly, to get people to do the jobs that we're doing right now. It's so important, and so being able to talk to them and make them aware of being active in our community and the opportunities that are out there is very fulfilling to me. I was also with Mrs. Gatto. She kind of transitioned her career a little bit, and she, she's still involved with the schools, but she's now working for the county as a gifted consultant, and she asked me to come in and spend part of the morning with her fifth-grade gifted students. And so we engaged with the students, helped them problem-solving issues that could affect our city, and it was, it was amazing, these fifth graders, what they were thinking and how they were problem-solving, and how she let their minds just be free to figure things out, and it was amazing. She's really such a wonderful teacher. We also had the opportunity to celebrate Lois Snively's 104th birthday at the Danbury. So this is my second 104-year-old that I was able to celebrate a birthday with. I can't believe we have two of them here in Talmage. So that's pretty great. Again, the Talmage Circular, we should have our next edition coming up here mid-March, isn't it? That's coming up?
Within the next.
Within the next.
Few weeks.
Few weeks. Yeah, well.
So by mid-March.
Beginning of March, mid-March, the next Talmage Circular will be coming up. It's a 16-page magazine, cooperation between the city administration, City Hall, Police Fire Department. Also, we're adding in the Rec Center as we had explained during the budget process. So the Rec Department will now have their information published quarterly, and then the, we're, again, with the Talmage City Schools, so it's going to be a great magazine mailed out to every household in the city. And that's about all I have. My next after-hours with the mayor is going to be in two weeks, on February 27th, from 4:00 to 6:00 o'clock. Anyone that wants to come and have a chat with me is free to do so. End of report. Any questions? No? Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Next up, our Director of Administration, Mr. Ignazito.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for the opportunity to provide a brief update. Just three quick points. We've received many applications for the economic developer position. We're going through those this week, finalizing them, and then next week, we'll be starting our first round of phone interviews, and pending the outcome of that, we'll schedule in-person interviews or continue with phone interviews. Business retention and expansion visits continue. We've conducted four. We met with Moore Plaza owner, formerly Midway Plaza. So as you can see, they've done some improvements there. He continues to work on that and continues to work to obtain more businesses at that location. We met with Ohio Gasket and Shim again. They're looking at some potential expansion over the next two years, and we're working with them to try to move them into, all of them into Talmage. We met with the Danbury on East Avenue, and then Meg Reduction, who works with plastics and pulverizing so they can be reused. I have no updates on the contract negotiation with the FOP, OLC, and IFF, but I do ask that you hold both ordinance 75 and 76 at third reading this evening. Pending your questions, that's all I have for tonight. Thank you.
And 77.
Oh, 77. I'm sorry. I typo on my part.
Thank you. Any, any questions for Director of Administration? I just had one. Was there any update on when we opened up bids for the Rec Center concessions?
I will defer to Director of Public Service.
Oh, I apologize.
Yes, and we're still going through those, so by the next meeting, I should have a better answer for you.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
I'll turn the mic back over to Director of Public Service.
Good evening. I'd like to request council pass ordinances 14, 15, 17, 18, 19, 20, 28, and 30 all at first reading this evening. Other than one of them, it's all housekeeping. So I appreciate that. For the month, well, before we get into the month. So ordinance is 2530. This is the master service agreement with the electric aggregation. I'm not real happy with this, but this is where we're at. So through May, we are at 4.96 cents. Starting in June, the best we can do is 8.63 cents, and that's for a year. If you look down below, can everybody see the Ohio Edison piece below the green line there? They're, they're going to 10.4 cents starting, and right, right, as soon as possible. So aggregation's not good, but this is a deal for one year. I don't think we need to go any further than that because hopefully we see some reduction in this. If you look at those top two charts, currently, we're paying 4.96, and if you look at that, the current capacity isn't even a half of a cent. Then the current generation is 4.66, then compared to the next one, look at how the capacity went up 2.7 cents. So it's, it's the transportation that's really driving that because then the, then the generation only went up a cent. So as bad as 8 cents sounds, it's, it's the best we got right now. And what's the problem with this is that's fluctuating every day, so if we, the longer we wait, we could end up with 10 cents again. So it's not good, but it's the best we got. So I'm asking council to approve that tonight. Any questions?
And we shop that around?
We have, for the last several months.
Who did we shop it to?
We have a broker, and he, that's his job, and he's been shopping around to everybody, and nobody's coming in any lower than that. Now, that's only, you know, you can opt out and find your own.
Yeah.
I mean, so it's, it's not handcuffing anybody. I mean, you can always go out and find your own. But you're not going to find, I mean, hopefully, and if somebody does find something better than that, call in.
I do have another question. Ms. Lewis had asked about the stop sign, and I know that I'd emailed you and the mayor about that, and you were going to look at possible previous engineer studies or costs for a new one. Did you have an update on that?
We actually have an engineer looking to see if they could do a stop sign at that location, right? They started the day after you emailed.
They did?
Yes. So we should have a report probably in the next 30 days.
Okay.
So.
And then are you able to provide that to us once you have?
Oh, yes.
Report?
Yep. Yep. That'll be public record, so.
Okay. Thank you.
Anybody have any questions on this aggregation? Okay. All right. So the trash bids went out, and they came in right there. Look at the circle down below. Current quarterly cost is $55.95. That's what we're paying Kimball today. If you look at the bids, that's the way they came in. Rumpke came in at 6240. Kimball came in at 6591. Ohio Valley came in at 76. 50 in Republic came in at $81.57 for the quarter. So we're moving forward with Rumpke. That's how the bid works, Lois and Best. So we will be changing providers again and trashcans again, but this time it'll be in the tail end of June, 1st to July. So the new cans will be out between June 24th and June 27th, and the old cans will be picked up by Kimball the week of, that same week, so.
Will the service change at all?
No. Everything stays, stays the same. So it's unlimited. You can throw out a couch. You can throw out 10 bags of trash. The couple of things are different. If you would like a larger recycling can, right now, there's 64 gallons. You can get a 96, the same size as your trashcan, and it'll be colored that, that highlighter green. That is an option. The other thing we're doing this time is the cans aren't part of the, the supplier's property. They actually become the city's, they become the resident's property. So hopefully, in five years, if, when we go out to bid and we have to change again, we won't be changing trashcans. So that is part of this bid.
Is when this transit, transition happens, I know residents like myself, big family, lots of kids, we have two trashcans and a recycle. Will that all transfer, or will we have to order that third?
You'd have to order that extra can.
Okay.
Yep.
Thank you.
You're welcome. So all in all, if you, if you're looking at that, it's, you know, it's not horrible. It goes up a total of $25.80 for the year. I mean, considering, that's, that's not, that's not bad. I actually like this slide better than the aggregation slide.
So if your service was on a Monday, your service remains on a Monday if it's on a Friday, so they get, they get that master schedule?
Yep. Nothing changes.
And they're able to meet, meet that?
Yep.
Demand and, okay.
Right. I mean, you know, there'll be the honeymoon period where we don't love them, we don't like them, they're learning.
Oh, yeah.
I mean, that'll be, that's a guaranteed, but they'll figure it out.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
With the, with the trashcans, you'd stated those are then, those are city property?
Resident property. So they, they stay with that house? So if you move out, those trashcans stay?
Okay.
They'll, they'll be marked with the city of Talmage.
They'll have a city emblem on them.
Yeah.
Okay.
And it'll be part of the trash program, so they, you know, it's part of that, so.
It's all a part of the program, so if there's an issue with the can or something, then they work with Rumpke?
Yeah. The supplier still fixes the cans.
Okay.
We have, but, but they stay. The whole goal is to avoid the switching of the trashcans every five years. That, that becomes a pain. No one likes it. So hopefully, this, this curtails that in the future.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, moving on. 68 total permits were issued for the month. 29 of them were street openings, and 16 were zoning certificates, code violations 37, and you can see there that it was mostly a property disrepair. Cemeteries, we had six total burials, four full, two cremains. The parks there, you can see the membership, we're up to 2019 numbers, which is good. So that's all pre-pandemic numbers. That's good. You can see the visits were 27,000. Unique visits was 3,400. The parent date night, February 15th, costs $30, $30 per child residence, and then $40 for non-residents. Family fun night, February 28th, costs is $8 if you pre-sale it, and then $10 if you buy it the day of the event. MACA memberships go on sale to residents February 15th, and then non-residents March 15th, and we're running the same amount of passes as we did last year at 2,250. And you can see the rates there down below. Street department, pretty impressive, the amount of hours in snow and ice control, 1,500. And I'd, I'd like to say they've done a great job. We've had some really bad conditions, and the streets have been passable. 8.93 tons of debris have been removed by street sweepings. 121 hours on pothole repairs. So I want to draw your attention to the picture to the left. That's the problem, we have wet weather, and we get deep freezes. That road was just paved in '22, and that's usually a sign of three things. That's either a saturated subbase or a poor subbase. So I'm going to go with a poor subbase because of the open ditch next to it. That should have allowed that water trapped underneath to weep out, so there probably wasn't much of a subbase at the edge. This is common, as you drive around, the roads are heaving all over the place, so we're going to have a pretty decent pothole season coming up. And then the street light inventory was completed last month. Water department, eight water main breaks. Same thing with the picture of the freezing pavement, that, that frost is getting in the ground, and as it's thawing, it's twisting. the freezing pavement. That frost is getting in the ground, and as it's thawing, it's twisting. What's remarkable is we only had 16 water breaks in 24. We're at half of that right now. So on average, we only do 17. So I'm hoping we slow down. And guys have just done a nice job in this department as well. Not an easy task, freezing weather, but they've been on top of it. So they've been doing a nice job. And that completes my report unless there's any questions.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next up, our Director of Finance. Ms. Gilbreath.
Good evening. I've submitted my January financial reports. As I've stated previously, probably every January, it's one month of financial data, so it doesn't give a lot of big indicators on how the year is going to go. Our income tax is ahead, but mainly being driven by the collection of individual taxes. At the end of last year, we did do a mailing, reminding people who had not filed that were missing returns to file. So some of that driving that individual return is those people are now filing, and we're collecting any back taxes that were owed for them with those non-filing. So we do that every couple of years to just remind residents that they need to file and make sure we have everything that we need, and we're collecting all the revenue we need to provide to the city. Otherwise, everything is kind of going as planned. Just as Mr. Rohr stated, this year, we're getting a lot more snow expenses. So as you saw in the rec profit and loss, we have a lot of snow plow and removal that we have not seen. So those are hitting us, but not outside of any budgetary figures, but just something. We were lucky last year to not have those. This year, we're going to be using, be using up those funds. If anybody has specific questions on anything, I'll be glad to answer them.
Yeah, just a quick one. The plowing that you're referring to at the rec center and stuff, is that done by the city, or is that a contract out?
We have a contract out. It depends on the time of the day. Sometimes the city will pick it up, but there's also a contracted bid plow that we use.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. Next up, our Director of Law. Ms. Raiber.
Thank you. Just wanted to point out tonight, you do have quite a few housekeeping ordinances. And for the public that may be observing or watching, that just means that those are ordinances that are related to what was already approved in the annual appropriation or the annual budget, and they just need to be done in order to allow us to go out for bid or enter into contracts, or whatever that might be. So you're going to have quite a few of those tonight that we would ask for first reading adoption of. Thank you.
Any questions? All right. We'll move into our reports of standing committees of council, the whole. We'll kick things off with the planning and zoning with Councilwoman Epstein.
Thank you. I call planning and zoning to order. The Planning and Zoning Committee deals with land use, zoning, conditional uses, planning, economic and community development, and public property. We have before us this evening at first reading ordinance 2025-32, imposing a six-month moratorium on acceptance of any zoning application for vape and/or smoke establishments or shops within the city of Talmage and providing for immediate enactment. The sponsor is Mayor Kilway. Would you like to speak to this ordinance?
Yeah, this is just, we want to take a look at our rules and requirements and locations of where our vape and/or smoke shop establishments are located within the city to make sure that they're appropriate. So we just want to put a moratorium on it so we can dive into it a little deeper and make sure that we have our i's dotted and t's crossed as to where they should be located and what type of a commercial, you know, zoning entity, establishment, or whatever. So we'll, you know, obviously, we don't want this at first reading right now. We can.
We need to set the public.
Set the public.
Oh, we do need to set, that's right. We have to set the public hearing before spring break. Sorry about that. I forgot. So, yes, we would like first reading adoption on this so that we can.
No.
No?
No. We're just giving it a first reading tonight.
Give it a first reading tonight.
We're setting a public hearing for March 13.
She doesn't have that on the agenda. Okay. Is there any, anything else you wanted to add? Okay. Okay. So with that explanation, I can go ahead and set the public hearing now for March 13 at 7:05 PM.
7:01, please.
7:01. March 13 at 7:01 PM. Is there any other discussion on that ordinance before we move on? Okay. We have no other additional items before us this evening. Does anyone have anything else for planning and zoning? Hearing none. I close.
Thank you. Next up is our Finance Committee with Councilman Pavlik. Please open.
Thank you. I call the Finance Committee meeting to order. The Finance Committee deals with budget appropriations, reappropriations, bonds, franchises, investments, and expenditures. Currently, we have five first reading ordinances. First up is ordinance 2521-21, authorizing the mayor to purchase online subscription services with Microsoft Corporation, which are special in nature and not requiring a competitive bid, and providing for immediate enactment. Sponsor of this ordinance is Mayor Kilway. This ordinance was read into record. Mayor Kilway, do you have anything to add?
This is one of those housekeeping items so that we can continue using our Microsoft software.
Is there any questions from council? Hearing none. Is there a motion?
Motion to accept.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Madam Clerk, you please call the roll.
Yes.
Ted Roy?
Yes.
Nick Rubino?
Yes.
Jonathan Bolas?
Yes.
Christine Sippa?
Yes.
Jessica Epstein?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. The motion passes six to zero. Thank you. Next up is 25, 2025-22, authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract without competitive bidding and through the state purchasing program or Sourcewell, or is authorized by RC 125.04C with Johnson Controls, Inc. for the purchase of an integrated security, software licenses, and related equipment, and providing for immediate enactment. Sponsor of this ordinance is Mayor Kilway. This ordinance has been read into record. Mayor Kilway, anything to add?
No. Again, this is just, the funds have already been appropriated in the 2025 budget, and it's to purchase integrated security, software licenses, and related equipment from Johnson Controls. And, you know, they're part of the competitive bidding procedures. So.
Thank you. Any questions from council? Is there a motion?
Motion to accept.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. Madam Clerk, you please call the roll.
Ted Roy?
Yes.
Nick Rubino?
Yes.
Jonathan Bolas?
Yes.
Christine Sippa?
Yes.
Jessica Epstein?
Yes.
Donald Pavlik?
Yes.
Motion passes six to zero. Thank you. Next up is ordinance 2025-23, authorizing participation in the National Association of State Procurement Officials and the National Association of State Procurement Officials Value Point for the purpose of contracting with Verizon Wireless for telephone and internet services and providing for immediate enactment. Sponsor of this ordinance is Mayor Kilway. This ordinance has been read into record. Mayor Kilway, anything to add?
Just the same as before. This has already been appropriated in the 2025 budget. This is for telephone and internet services, and we currently contract with Verizon. So this allows us to use NASPO as the cooperative purchasing program to facilitate this public procurement process.
Thank you. Any questions from council? Is there a motion?
Motion to accept.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. We have, we have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion from council? Hearing none. Madam Clerk, you please call the roll.
Nick Rubino?
Yes.
Jonathan Bolas?
Yes.
Christine Sippa?
Yes.
Jessica Epstein?
Yes.
Donald Pavlik?
Yes.
Ted Roy?
Yes.
Thank you. The motion passes with a vote of six to zero. Next up, ordinance 2025-24, authorizing the mayor enter into a contract without competitive bidding and through the state purchasing program or is authorized by RC 125.04 with Motorola Solutions for the purchase of radio equipment, video equipment, software licenses, and related equipment and providing for immediate enactment. Sponsor of this ordinance is Mayor Kilway. This ordinance has been read into the record. Mayor Kilway, anything to add?
Nothing to add. Again, this is housekeeping. It's already been approved through the budget process, and this allows us to purchase it.
Any questions from council? Is there a motion?
Motion to accept.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Madam Clerk, you please call the roll.
Jonathan Bolas?
Yes.
Christine Sippa?
Yes.
Jessica Epstein?
Yes.
Donald Pavlik?
Yes.
Ted Roy?
Yes.
Nick Rubino?
Yes.
Okay. That motion passes six to zero. Thank you. Next up is ordinance 2025-25, accepting donations to the city of Talmage for 2024 and providing for immediate enactment. Sponsor of this ordinance is Finance Director, Ms. Gilbreath. Ms. Gilbreath, anything to add?
These are just the various donations that have been made to the city in 2024 and just require acceptance by council.
Okay. Thank you. Is there any discussion from council?
Yeah. No, I just wanted to express the thank you to all those donors. And I just wanted to call attention to the, it was All Breed Training Club of Akron, Talmage Historical Society, the Country Clean Car Wash, and the Talmage Little League, as well as, let's see, the Matt Lyons Memorial donations at the request of Roger and Sue Lyons. And I don't think I missed any. And the last one just shows from various sources. So thank you.
Okay. Is there a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. There's a first and a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Madam Clerk, you please call the roll.
Christine Sippa?
Yes.
Jessica Epstein?
Yes.
Donald Pavlik?
Yes.
Ted Roy?
Yes.
Nick Rubino?
Yes.
Jonathan Bolas?
Yes.
Okay. That motion passes six to zero. And I apologize. There was a second page. We have three more. Ordnance 2025-27, authorizing the mayor to contract with Kastner, Westman, and Wilkins, LLC for legal services and consulting services and providing for immediate enactment. Sponsor of this ordinance is Law Director, Ms. Raiber. This ordinance has been read into record. Ms. Raiber, do you want to add anything?
This is also housekeeping. This has been, the attorney fees have been budgeted, and this is necessary as they have an expertise in labor law.
Okay. Thank you. Is there any discussion on council floor? Hearing none. Is there a motion?
Motion to pass.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. We have a motion, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Madam Clerk, you please call the roll.
Jessica Epstein?
Yes.
Donald Pavlik?
Yes.
Ted Roy?
Yes.
Nick Rubino?
Yes.
Jonathan Bolas?
Yes.
Christine Sippa?
Yes.
Okay. Motion passes six to zero. Next up is ordinance 2025-29, declaring city-owned personal property to be excess obsolete and authorizing the donation of said equipment to the Village of Apple Creek and certain conditions and providing for immediate enactment. Sponsor of this ordinance is Mayor Kilway. Mayor Kilway, do you have anything to add?
No, just, just for clarification, these are some very, very, very old tasers that have been sitting in a drawer for at least the nine, the last nine years. They're not being used. We do have, you know, other ones that are more reliable, that are under warranty, that can actually be serviced that we are using. And there was an ask from, from this village to, you know, if they could, if we could donate them to them because they had some budgetary constraints and they needed some tasers. So.
Curious how we found Apple Creek.
Go ahead, Joe.
The Ohio Association's of Chiefs of Police put out a call for various equipment to law enforcement agencies. We happen to have some items that we have not used in many years. They're serviceable. Perfect. Thank you. Is there any questions from council floor?
When it says certain conditions, what are those conditions?
They're listed in the whereas clauses, that they're going to be, that they know that they're taking them on without any promise that they will actually be working in working order, and that they'll also basically make sure we have no liability for them taking them on.
Thank you. Okay. Any other additional questions? Hearing none. Do we have a motion?
Motion to pass.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Madam Clerk, you please call the roll.
Donald Pavlik?
Yes.
Ted Roy?
Yes.
Nick Rubino?
Yes.
Jonathan Bolas?
Yes.
Christine Sippa?
Yes.
Jessica Epstein?
Yes.
Okay. With that, ordinance 2025-29 passes with a motion of six to zero. Last but not least, ordinance 2025-31, authorizing the Director of Public Service to advertise and solicit bids for the mayor to enter into contract for restoration of the MACA Aquatic Center slide and providing for immediate enactment. Sponsor of this ordinance is Director of Public Service, Mr. Rohr. This ordinance is read into record. Mr. Rohr, anything to add?
Yes. So this is, this is the structure that holds up the slide and not the slide itself. So it's the structure that holds it up.
Are there any questions from council floor? Hearing none. Is there a motion?
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none. Madam Clerk, you please call the roll.
Ted Roy?
Yes.
Nick Rubino?
Yes.
Jonathan Bolas?
Yes.
Christine Sippa?
Yes.
Jessica Epstein?
Yes.
Donald Pavlik?
Yes. Okay. With that, ordinance 2025-31 passes with a motion of six to zero.
Thank you.
Welcome. And that is all for all the ordinances under Finance. Is there anything else that needs to be brought to Finance Committee? Hearing none. I will close committee. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. We'll move along to our Personnel Committee with Councilwoman Sippa.
The Personnel Committee deals with personnel, labor relations, insurance claims, rules of council, and state statutes. These are third readings, again, of ordinances and resolutions. And if I'm correct, you want to leave these in third reading?
Yes, that's correct. And I keep forgetting FOP is broken, even though we negotiate concurrently, it's, I believe, 76 and 77. So all three, we'd like to keep in third reading.
Okay. Do we need to read those? Okay. All right. Third readings of ordinances and resolutions, which will remain third reading. Ordinance 2024-75, authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement with the International Association of Firefighters, the local 2764, and providing for immediate enactment. Sponsor, Mayor Kilway. Do you have any comments, Mayor Kilway?
No comments at this time on any of these. Thank you.
Okay. If I may, I just wanted to say that hopefully, at next meeting, we would be able to potentially look at tabling, and we would have more dates, more information that we might be able to do that so that they don't keep popping up on your agenda, and they would come back up at a later date. So we'll look to try to do that next meeting.
Thank you. Okay. Ordinance 2024-76, authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement with the Fraternal Order of Police, consisting of Talmage Patrol Officers and providing for immediate enactment. Sponsor, Mayor Kilway. Ordinance 2024-77, authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement with the Fraternal Order of Police, consisting of Talmage Police Sergeants and Talmage Police Lieutenants, and providing for immediate enactment. Sponsor, Mayor Kilway. We have a first reading of ordinances, resolutions of 2025-26, authorizing the Director of Finance to advertise for proposals and the mayor to enter into one or more contracts for major medical, dental, eye, and/or group life insurance for various officials and employees of the city and providing for immediate enactment. Sponsor, Director of Finance, Gilbreath. Did you want to say anything?
This is just so that we can get proposals and make bids for our annual insurance.
Do you want to, you wanted to approval, immediate approval?
Yeah, it's, it's a public ordinance. So if you would like to adopt it, that would be great.
Okay. Do I have a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
Motion to approve and adopt. Any comments, questions?
I just had one question. In terms of the process for advertising for these proposals, does this, is this an item that would be, that would go to the, like, the Cost Containment Committee agenda prior to going to council, or is it vice versa?
So this would be a process where basically we use our broker to get quotes or whatnot when we need, when it's time to renew our insurance. Currently, yes, this would be taken to the Cost Containment Committee, but it does not come back to council.
Okay. Thank you.
Any more questions? No. Sue? Nick Rubino?
Yes.
Jonathan Bolas?
Yes.
Christine Sippa?
Yes.
Jessica Epstein?
Yes.
Donald Pavlik?
Yes.
Ted Roy?
Yes.
Okay. Ordinance passes six to zero. Any additional items to come before Personnel? Ordinance passes six to zero. Any additional items to come before personnel? Hearing none, closing personnel.
Thank you very much. Next up, we'll move on to Safety Committee with Councilman Rabinow.
Thank you. The Safety Committee deals with disaster services, communications, fire, and paramedics, police, and health. We currently have no legislation before us. Does anyone have any questions for committee? Hearing none, I close committee.
Thank you. We'll move along to the Community Issues Committee with Councilman Roy.
Yes, I'd like to open up Community Issues. Community Issues Committee deals with parks and recreation, civic affairs, and liaison between council and the Recreation Board, and our governmental affairs. Tonight, we have no legislation in front of us. Does anybody else have any comments? Discussion. If not, I will close committee. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Moving along to Public Service Committee, Councilwoman Epstein.
Thank you. I call Public Service Committee to order. The Public Service Committee deals with streets, highways, sidewalks, buildings, and improvements, water, sewer, electricity, gas, energy resources, recycling, waste, and trash. We have many first readings before us this evening, and so I will start with 2025-14, authorizing the mayor to contract with Vernantas for engineering and consulting services relating to water system development and other general engineering services and providing for immediate enactment. The sponsor is Director of Public Service Rohr. I know we spoke about this earlier. These are basically all housekeeping items this evening.
Yes, they were CT consultants before, they just got bought out, but we use them for water and sanitary engineering.
Okay, great. I'll entertain a motion.
So moved. Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Jonathan Bolus.
Yes.
Christine Sippa.
Yes.
Jessica Epstein.
Yes.
Donald Pavlik.
Yes.
Ted Roy.
Yes.
Nick Rabinow.
Yes.
Ordinance 2025-14 passes with a vote of six to zero.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Next, ordinance 2025-15, authorizing the mayor to contract with Branstadter Carroll Inc. for engineering and consulting services relating to parks and recreation design and engineering, providing for immediate enactment. The sponsor is Director of Public Service Rohr. This is another housekeeping item.
Yes, this is an engineering firm that mostly does our parks.
Okay. Pretty straightforward. I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to adopt.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Christine Sippa.
Yes.
Jessica Epstein.
Yes.
Donald Pavlik.
Yes.
Ted Roy.
Yes.
Nick Rabinow.
Yes.
Jonathan Bolus.
Yes.
Motion 2025-15 passes with a vote of six to zero. Next, we have ordinance 2025-16, expressing intent to sell unneeded, obsolete, or unfit city personnel property, including but not limited to vehicles and equipment by Internet and/or auto, I lost my spot, I'm sorry, and/or auto auction in the calendar year 2025 and providing for immediate enactment. Director of Public Service is the sponsor.
This one can actually go a couple of readings. It's, it's not housekeeping, so.
Okay.
That was for specific.
This is the general one that we're required to adopt every single year, yes.
All right, so I misspoke, Ms. Raiber. So, this is housekeeping.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to adopt.
I'll second it.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Is there any other discussion? Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Jessica Epstein.
Yes.
Donald Pavlik.
Yes.
Ted Roy.
Yes.
Nick Rabinow.
Yes.
Jonathan Bolus.
Yes.
Christine Sippa.
Yes.
All right, ordinance 2025-16 passes with a vote of six to zero.
Thank you.
At first reading. Ordinance 2025-17, authorizing the Director of Public Service to advertise for bids and the mayor to award a contract for trucking and hauling and providing for immediate enactment. The sponsor is Director of Public Service Rohr. Again, this is housekeeping requested at first reading.
Correct.
I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to adopt.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, madam clerk, please call the roll.
Donald Pavlik.
Yes.
Ted Roy.
Yes.
Nick Rabinow.
Yes.
Jonathan Bolus.
Yes.
Christine Sippa.
Yes.
Jessica Epstein.
Yes. Ordinance 2025-17 passes with a vote of six to zero.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Ordinance 2025-18, authorizing the Ohio Director of Transportation to complete the mowing of I-76 within the city limits and providing for immediate enactment. The sponsor is Director of Public Service Rohr.
This is also housekeeping. This is the mowing that ODOT does up there on 76 for us.
Is there a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Second, okay. We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Ted Roy.
Yes.
Nick Rabinow.
Yes.
Jonathan Bolus.
Yes.
Christine Sippa.
Yes.
Jessica Epstein.
Yes.
Donald Pavlik.
Yes.
Ordinance 2025-18 passes with a vote of six to zero.
Thank you.
Ordinance 2025-19, authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract for CCTV inspection and cleaning consulting services relating to city sewers and providing for immediate enactment. Sponsor is Director of Public Service Rohr. Is this another housekeeping item?
Yes, so this, this is for videoing and cleaning the sanitary lines that the city can't get to, so.
Okay. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to adopt.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Nick Rabinow.
Yes.
Jonathan Bolus.
Yes.
Christine Sippa.
Yes.
Jessica Epstein.
Yes.
Donald Pavlik.
Yes.
Ted Roy.
Yes.
Motion 2020, uh, ordinance 2025-19 passes with a vote of six to zero. Ordinance 2025-20, authorizing the mayor to purchase online subscription service, services with Environmental Systems Research Institute, Inc., which are special in nature and not requiring competitive bid and providing for immediate enactment. The sponsor is Mayor Kilway.
Good evening. This is a ordinance that'll cross all departments. It's for ESRI. We use it for ARC GIS, and this is a housekeeping piece of, piece of legislation that is, we have every year. We're actually enhancing our abilities to do more things in the field and purchasing additional license for the police fire department and the administration to use as planning zoning and emergency management and disaster response planning. And it'll also add more ability for the 17 license we have for the street department for tagging and marking different items that they work on, from sewer lines to water lines to fire hydrants. So, pending your questions, that's all I have.
Okay, great. Thank you.
I'll make a motion to adopt.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Jonathan Bolus.
Yes.
Christine Sippa.
Yes.
Jessica Epstein.
Yes.
Donald Pavlik.
Yes.
Ted Roy.
Yes.
Nick Rabinow.
Yes.
2025-20 passes with a vote of six to zero. Ordinance 2025-28, authorizing the mayor to contract with DMS Water Solutions for engineering and consulting services relating to water system development and other general engineering services and providing for immediate enactment. The sponsor is Director of Public Service Rohr.
This is also housekeeping. It's a sanitary engineer that we use.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to adopt.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Christine Sippa.
Yes.
Jessica Epstein.
Yes.
Donald Pavlik.
Yes.
Ted Roy.
Yes.
Nick Rabinow.
Yes.
Jonathan Bolus.
Yes.
Ordinance 2025-28 passes with a vote of six to zero.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Ordinance 2025-30, authorizing the Director of Public Service to negotiate and the mayor to enter into a master service agreement for electric aggregation services with Dinerji Energy Services East LLC, Energy Services LLC, DESE, and providing for immediate enactment. This is the painful one we talked about earlier.
Yes, it is.
I'll make a motion. Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any other discussion?
Just point of order, if you can just clarify that it's a motion to adopt.
A motion to adopt. Second.
Still have a second, okay. Is there any discussion? Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Jessica Epstein.
Yes.
Donald Pavlik.
Yes.
Ted Roy.
Yes.
Nick Rabinow.
Yes.
Jonathan Bolus.
Yes.
Christine Sippa.
Yes.
Ordinance 2025-30 passes with a vote of six to zero.
Thank you.
You're welcome. That concludes our ordinances. We have no other items before us this evening. Is there anything else for public service? Hearing none, I close committee.
Thank you. Moving on to item 11, reports of special committees. Council Operations Committee have no additional items this evening. Are there any announcements?
I did want to just give one announcement. Madam Clerk, I don't know if you can pull up the picture that I sent you. It's in your email, but I did host in partnership with Councilwoman Gutman my second annual Hearts for Heroes event, and I just wanted to share that with the community. We had a nice turnout. We made valentines for veterans in our local community, and we were able to provide about 100 handmade valentines for our vets.
It's not set up yet.
It's, well, I'll, I'll share the picture on Facebook. It's not critical, but I just wanted to share that we had a nice event here in council chambers.
Excellent. Thank you very much. And just as a reminder, we will be going into executive session regarding potential purchase of real property. So, at this time, I'm going to ask for a motion and a second and a roll call at, to go into executive session at 8:03 PM. We will then return to have our Richardson Trust meeting following adjournment of the meeting.
I'll make a motion to go into executive session.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to go into executive session at 8:03 PM. Please call the roll.
Donald Pavlik.
Yes.
Ted Roy.
Yes.
Nick Rabinow.
Yes.
Jonathan Bolus.
Yes.
Christine Sippa.
Yes.
Jessica Epstein.
Yes.
Thank you. We will now adjourn for executive session. It is 8:04 PM on February 13, 2025.